I'm going to call tonight's meeting of January 24th, 2022 to order. Roll call, please, Lisa.
Mrs. Flipper?
Here.
Ms. Burnett?
Here.
Ms. Chapman?
Here.
Mr. Merritt?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Palmer? Mr. Pickering?
Here.
Mr. Rose?
Mr. Smith?
Okay, we will stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I would like to make note of executive session, December 6th, 2021, for contract negotiations and potential litigation, and January 18th, 2021, for contract negotiations and personnel. At this time, Lisa, would you please place a motion to amend the agenda for the addition of a discussion regarding the district's health and safety plan? And please place this motion to amend the agenda as the first item under Section 8 for committee reports. Thank you. And I would also, knowing that there's a lot of public comments at this time, I'm just going to switch and let the student representatives go first so that they don't have to stay for a long period of time, and then we'll move on to public comments. So, let's start with Cochran Junior Senior High School, Zoe Hansen and Kendall Rose. Do we need to go out and get them? I'll do it.
I'm not sure we have anyone from Cochran.
Oh, okay. Nobody from Cochran? All right, Meadville Area Senior High School, Kate Emili and Megan Willis?
That's all I see out there.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
Hi, everyone. Good to see you all again. So, we haven't seen you in a while. So, December 13th, the high school hosted a reboot day for all of our students, grades nine through 12. Students got the opportunity to listen to several guest speakers from around the community, and all of the speakers were from former students of MASH, and they talked about where they are now in their careers and how Meadville prepared them for life. Students were excited to spread some holiday cheer through our annual door decorating contest in December, which is sponsored by our student government, and it was judged by middle school government students. And the winner was Mrs. Porter, who had a nightmare before Christmas for her door. And our sports, boys and girls, basketball, wrestling, and swimming are in full swing right now, and they're looking forward to their seasons.
Meadville also hosted their annual Tool City Wrestling Tournament, where teams from around the area came to compete. Schools like Cochran, Conne Lake, Gerard, Cambridge Springs, Maplewood, Jenner McLean, and Franklin were all represented. Some future events coming up in MASH are the Speech and Beta Club, or team, hosted a, is going to host a meet on February 17th. The school is also holding additions in the auditorium for the MASH Drama Spring Musical One in Rome on Tuesday, February 1st. Additions will be open to Meadville Area Senior High School students, as well as Meadville Area Middle School students and Cochran Junior and Senior High School students.
A little introduction for me. My name's Mitch McCain, and I'm the student governor at Meadville Area Senior High. The school will be having a winter week from February 7th to the 11th to recognize all of the winter sports teams, and the cheerleaders will be represented in our morning announcements each day. Finally, the first semester has come to an end today, and students and teachers will begin their new classes starting tomorrow. We are all hoping for a good second semester, and thank you for having us.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Flipper, we now have other representatives in the hall.
Oh, okay. Is it Cochran or Meadville?
We have both.
Okay, great. Then we can have Cochran Junior Senior High School, Zoe Hansen and Kendall Rose.
Hi, sorry. Okay, so, we haven't been super busy at Cochran so far, but our girls' basketball team won against Union City last Thursday, giving themselves a record of six to seven so far. They play Setnica tonight and Sager Town on Thursday, both at home. The boys' basketball team, they've gone through their season, and they currently hold a record of four to nine. Their teams play Sager Town on Tuesday and Maplewood on Friday, both on their home court as well. Our wrestling team currently stands with four wins and two losses so far this season. They head to cash tonight and go to Cambridge Springs on Wednesday. Our ASL team will be taking five members to regionals on February 11th and 12th. The juniors and seniors of STEM are working together on a STEM camp for the fifth and sixth grade students at the elementary school. This is an opportunity for the younger students to gain a small understanding of how the world functions with the ideas of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Red and white is coming up, and our student council has begun thinking about activities for it, which include the dance and the basketball game. The game's on the 11th of February, and the dance falls on the following Saturday, the 12th. And we've also begun thinking about an effective fundraiser for the American Heart Association in the upcoming months of the school year. Thank you.
All right, then we have Meadville Area Middle School, Chelsea Osterkamp and Isabella
Hi, I'm Isabella Thorson. At Ma'ams, we are happy to say goodbye to a successful first semester and are looking forward to semester number two. We have a quote from Coach Miller regarding Ma'ams basketball. The students at the Meadville Area Middle School are fortunate to be blessed with not just an eighth-grade basketball team, but a seventh-grade basketball team as well. Both teams had two wins and seven losses and are showing signs of improvement. The Ma'ams wrestling team has 16 wrestlers this year. Only four members have wrestled before this year, so we are having difficulties winning our matches. Our veteran wrestlers, Jacoby Thompson, Ryder Say, Trevor Milesen, and Lee Jordan, will all participate in the state qualifier meet at the Pennsylvania Junior Wrestling State Tournament in March. In student council news, Spirit Week will take place through January 31st through February 4th. Students will have the opportunity to dress accordingly relating to the theme of the day. Student council also held a collection for supplies at the Humane Society before Christmas. Thank you, see you next month.
Thank you. We will now move on to approval of minutes. It is resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following minutes. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Excuse me. I was moving forward. We're going back to public comments. My mistake. All right, so now we will offer up your moments for public comment. I have one, two, three, four people who have requested ahead of time to speak, so they will be afforded five minutes, and I will go in order that they called in to request to speak. And then I have one, two, three people that have signed up to speak at this time as they signed in, and they will be given three minutes to speak. So, we'll start with Shayna Morrison.
Good evening. My name is Shayna Morrison. I am a product of the Crawford Central School District system. I attended Neeson Hill for my entire elementary education. Then I went to Meadville Middle School, then I graduated from Meadville High School, and I am now a PhD candidate at Kent State. I am not here today to discuss the science of wearing a mask or to debate the propagating agendas politicizing basic health information. I come before you as a concerned parent with a child in the Crawford County School District. The first week back to school after winter break, a mother in our neighborhood called to inform me that her daughter tested positive for COVID. I was concerned. I was hospitalized with COVID, my mother was hospitalized with COVID pneumonia, my uncle was hospitalized with COVID pneumonia and died in August. I contacted the school nurse immediately because I wasn't sure what the procedure was for contact because she'd been in contact with this student on the bus. I was informed by the school, Second District, that contract tracing on buses was impossible for the school to monitor, and as long as both children were wearing masks, there was no need to quarantine our daughter. I called the mother back, asked the mother if her daughter was wearing a mask. She assured me she was. Our daughter was wearing a mask. What a relief. We wouldn't need to quarantine again and miss more valuable in-person education hours. However, we were advised to quarantine 10 days later if either of them were not masked. As I understand, this is still the current policy at Second District and other schools. I am fortunate to not have an immunocompromised child, but if I did, I probably wouldn't feel safe even speaking here at this meeting. We're not six feet apart, and many of us are not masked in this room. You wonder why people don't come here to express their concerns. This is not a safe place to do so. Since the school district dropped its masking mandate, teachers have been trying their best to space out students six feet apart in the classrooms, lunchrooms, and at recess. However, the new COVID variant continues to spread. Based on CDC records and published in the Meadville Tribune, from January 12th to 18th, there were 39 new cases of COVID in children under five, shutting down preschools across Meadville. And there were 168 cases just in that week in kids ages five to 18. We are a small, close-knit community. I know several of you personally and have even collaborated on projects together. Many of you are or were parents to children in the Crawford County School District. This is not an easy time to be a parent. We have difficult tasks ahead of us, from learning to use web-based learning modules during remote learning to asking the right questions about vaccinations. However, the school board can assist us by keeping our students in school and safe. I urge you to consider developing a masking policy at least through the end of winter and possibly into the spring semesters. There are many other examples from Erie to Pittsburgh that can be reviewed. Our local Creating Landscapes Learning Center K-8 has an effective masking mandate. This is where my other daughter attends. Not a single classroom has been shut down. Our kids have not had to quarantine even when individuals, kids were in contact, parents received a positive COVID test because students were masked. And for those of you that think maybe this is over, or by the time this is discussed, a policy will be a moot point, I encourage you to press forward regardless because we live in a highly global society, and I guarantee we have not seen the last of pandemics. How wonderful it would be to leave behind a well-advised plan for the next generation of school board leaders elected to do just that. Lead us during these difficult times. Actually, Harwood's daughter, Wyn Harwood, will not be speaking. She is stuck on the road in the snow, but the student Amelia Crowley will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so Amelia Crowley, who's next?
Good evening. My name is Amelia Crowley, and I'm a junior at Meadville Area Senior High. I was supposed to be joined tonight by Wyn Harwood, but unfortunately, she is not here. I came to talk to you today not because I want to further a political agenda or a certain way of looking at things, but because I'm worried about my community. That's the reason I'm asking you to reinstate a mask mandate in some form in our school district, to keep us all safe. I want to follow science. I want to be a chemist, and if masking is what science says is best for all of us, then I want to do that to keep our community safe. Wearing masks isn't a punishment, a political statement, or something for you to exploit for your own agenda. It's a safety precaution. Honestly, half the time, I forget that I'm wearing one. I can't tell you how many times I've tried to take a sip of water without taking it off. I'm sure you probably already know this, but there are about 850 students at MASH. That's almost 7% of the city of Meadville, and that's not even including all of the students in elementary schools and at the middle school. When one of us gets sick, it affects our whole community. If we have younger siblings who get quarantined, either our parents or we have to stay home to take care of them. I have a friend whose younger brother got COVID and accidentally gave it to his whole family, and they basically couldn't leave their house to do anything until they were all better. Even when we're quarantined or in remote learning, it's almost impossible to actually learn. Our teachers can't keep up when some students are at home and others are sitting in their classroom, so they prioritize the ones who are there with them, even if they don't want to. If they have children who are quarantined, then they possibly have to stay home, and in effect, are learning even more. I don't want anything bad to happen to my family. I don't want that to happen to my classmates, especially those who have elderly or immunocompromised family members who live with them. When one person comes to school and is sick, they can cause a harmful effect that hurts us all. I don't want to be that person, do you? Our schools are supposed to protect us. If you can't even protect us from a disease, how are you supposed to protect us from anything? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Robert Conley.
Hello, my name is Robert Conley. I live in Old Street, Meadville, and I am the parent of a senior in the Meadville Area Senior High School. In last week's Tribune article about the Committee of the Hall, there were doubts expressed about masking, specifically how effective they are. I don't want to run over my time. I'm not sure what I can say in five minutes that will convince folks that masks are effective. All I can say is that the reason we know it works is because of hundreds of papers and studies based on thousands of observations that covered every circumstances imaginable, including what happens when you put hundreds of adults and children in the same building for six to eight hours per day. These studies are widely available, and most, many are free on the Internet. So, when you study these, you will have to weigh stacks of studies versus another stack. I'm not going to go through statistics. I did that last time with the Committee of the Hall. But with those of you without doubts about masking, here's something you may not know. Dr. Becky Dawson, a local epidemiologist, gave me this information, that up until December 2021, all the studies you've seen on masking in schools were based on schools having mask mandates in place. And this includes, these studies include mask being, you know, the nose being exposed, half-worn, all of that. Florida was one of the first states to remove mask mandates, and there's been a few studies that emerged since. These studies have shown that unmasked schools are four times more likely to have outbreaks of COVID, and that in every instance, masked schools had fewer cases in a healthier student population. Last week, you received a proposed revision to the Health and Safety Plan of the district. I gave you another copy in case we don't have it tonight. The mutual goal of this plan is to keep schools open. As the previous speaker stated, learning from home is not ideal. It wasn't ideal for our son, and it wasn't ideal for many students. This policy contains a measured response to the pandemic, requiring masking and other measures to be in place when the risk was high, just defined by the CDC, and removing them when there are not. Nobody likes masking. We don't want to mask. So that way, we build into the policy that a sane policy of when to mask. In addition, the district, the policy asks the district to provide high-quality masks to all students and staff and actively promote vaccination opportunities for all students and staff and not just rely on the community. This is a policy that will change, that will change in response to local conditions and changes in guidelines. This board has the authority to enact the policy tonight. I have attached the relevant section from the bylaws to the packet I handed out to you, as well as the notification section from Section 712.1 from PA State Title 65. One of you will need to stand up after the public comments to make this motion, and I already have, sorry. Mr. Washington, members of the board, I respectfully ask you to debate this policy, to consider it, and to vote upon it. This is a question for all of you. And on a personal note, the reason I'm so passionate in standing before you is my lovely wife here, Kellyanne. She has asthma. I cannot afford for her to catch COVID-19, and if it happened to be my son who gave it to her, he would be absolutely devastated. I had COVID, and I was darn lucky not to have passed on to the rest of my family. A sane public health policy such as the one proposed before you will help safeguard her and everybody else in the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, up on the list, next is Ron Erwin. Ron, I just want to clarify, you have three minutes.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Ron Erwin from Cochran, PA. Been called everything from anti-masker right on through because I've presented science and facts, and the fact is, in case you didn't get the memo, that the Obama administration just admitted, and the CDC just admitted, that those cloth masks are worthless, okay? You cannot stop a one-micron virus with an 80-micron filter. It just doesn't work. This chart right here on my phone, 27 schools within 50-mile radius. The forced mask was 3.38% infection rate. No mask was 1.624% infection rate. 50-mile radius of this place right here, forced mask, double the COVID case rate. There is not a single study in the world, and after two years, you would think there would be, of an actual study, peer-reviewed study on masking. None, none. N95, still no peer-reviewed studies, none. Studies coming out of the UK showing the psychological and health effects on children for wearing masks, though. There's, those studies are out there, peer-reviewed studies of the effects. Find me a single peer-reviewed study on masks being effective. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and last that has signed up tonight is Marsha Medka.
Thank you. Mr. Erwin, I will get you some peer-reviewed studies if you just give me your email. Thanks very much for putting this on your agenda tonight. I'm here to just let you know, I've let the school board members, I'm sure council is already aware of this, that there's more than one pathway to get back to mandates for masks at high transmission periods. Two school districts in southwestern Pennsylvania have now sued. Parents have sued successfully to get the districts to reinstate mask mandates, North Allegheny, as well as Upper St. Clair. Upper St. Clair yesterday was an appellate court that ruled that they would be masking again today in school. This is not the ideal way to go, in my opinion, to get policy done, to have to resort to the courts, but the reason that these suits are being successful is that you, as school directors, have a right, have the responsibility to protect every student who's here under the Americans with Disabilities Act, which means that you need to give them fair and equal access to educational services. In this case, the judge, the attorney who was representing them, said that the board's action in eliminating the mask mandate forced parents to make the unfair and unjust decision of whether to pull their children from school or face the risk of exposure to virus. Last week, had a conversation with you, Jean, where you told me that you have to represent all of the people in your attendance area and in the schools, and that, of course, is correct. However, you also have a duty to represent every single student and students who are medically fragile, who are coming to school at risk to their own health. And I, while I think this is not the right pathway, I would encourage parents who are listening tonight, caretakers, foster parents, to consider this. If you have a child who's medically fragile, then you need to familiarize yourself with this approach and look to people in the community to support you if this is the way to keep your kids safe in school. Thank you.
Excuse me, I didn't get a chance to sign in, to speak. Can you give me, I drove an hour.
No problem. We had to sign in in here, no problem. Go ahead.
And it's been a while since, Kim Nicklin, and as a Nancy, I-C-K-L-I-N, and it has nothing to do with COVID, but I want to bring to the attention tonight about this whole pension and the boards, they want the boards to sign an agreement that they won't tell anything about what they're about to tell you. And I'm very disturbed about that and very upset that they would even ask the boards to sign it.
I'm sorry, could you restate that? I didn't, what's the topic?
The PISers, that investigation of the PISers. And they're asking the boards to sign a non, they want you guys to sign and say, all right, we'll hear you, but we can't say anybody, the taxpayers that pay the PISers, we're not allowed to, we're not allowed to know anything about what, because somebody's name might be ruined.
Okay, but we have not received that yet, and I'm sure.
Well, it is, it is coming, though.
Come out, and I'll give it to the board. I'll give it to the board, and then I'll have to make a decision.
Well, I'm here to put my opinion that I just, I know I understand the whole thing, but I do understand that, first of all, they're hiding something. In the 90s, you know, the pensions were making very good income, and then, so the unions all went together, and they say, hey, we're not getting enough of our pension, we're not getting enough of this percentage. I want to raise our, what we get when we retire, so they did. Then what happens? 9/11 happens. Guess what happens to all the stock market? They crashed. Did they go back on what they, did they lower that rate? No. No, we're still paying at a high rate, and now, or there's a cover-up because somebody said, oh, you know, they, it made enough that you guys, the teachers, would not have to contribute anymore. And how many times has that happened? I'm just really infuriated with them asking you to sign that thing, and I'm here to say that. And one last thing for the teachers' union, who's here representing the teachers' union? Is there anybody? Anyhow, to all the teachers.
Where, what is your residence?
I live in Berser County, French Creek, the highest, the highest-paying township. I mean.
I just needed to clarify that you were part of.
I am, I am, yeah, I was complaining, but anyhow, so, this is my thing for the teachers. The teachers are complaining about how terrible their job is, and this is why they get paid so much. Okay, the unions were developed to give you better pay and better working conditions. And the years that I've seen, the teachers, all they want in the union, and I'm talking about administrators, just not teachers, all they want is more money. Has the more money made your job any better? You can make $100,000, $200,000 a year, and you would still say you hate your job. So why don't the union, this is my thing, call to the teachers and the administrators, go together to unions and get the educational system of Pennsylvania straightened out because it is a mess? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. So now we will move on to approval of minutes. It is resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following minutes: the regular board meeting of November 22nd, 2021, reorganization meeting of December 6th, 2021, and Committee of the Hall meeting of January 18th, 2022. And I need a motion. I'll move. Melissa, thank you. In a second.
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And now, at this time, I need a motion to amend tonight's agenda for the addition of a discussion regarding the district's health and safety plan. I make that motion. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
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 I think we better have a rule on that. Lisa.
Mrs. Flipper?
Yes.
Ms. Burnett?
The motion is to have a discussion. Oh, yes.
Ms. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Merritt?
No.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pickering?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
I didn't hear you say Jeff.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Jeff.
No.
Mr. Rose.
No.
Okay, motion carries five to eight. Five to three, I'm sorry. Eight total. Okay. So I will open it up for any member who would like to discuss to share their view of point.
Do you want me to start by setting the stage? You had several members from the community come to you, and they made some suggestions. You've had members who had talked about leveled phases of masking. You had people that talked about the district being involved with providing N95 masks specifically, as well as the education of vaccination to families, educating families about vaccination. And so that was the request that was made. You also had, over time, requests from parents that say that we do not think, we think it should remain in the hands of the parents that highly recommend it. So that is, that discussion here is that I think the district needs to have a discussion in public about the board, rather, about how you feel about those requests or what you might give me your feedback. So I just wanted to set the stage. If you recall last week, so everybody understands, the masking was like zero to 10, it would be total choice. Then I think it was 10 to 49 would be a highly recommend. And then a over 100 would be mandatory masking.
Fifty or more, is that?
Fifty or more.
Fifty or more? Was it fifty or more?
Is it fifty or more?
It's overhead.
For 100,000?
Per 100,000.
Per 100,000. So I don't know what that means as far as schools.
Well, if you recall, so I want to go back, and so everybody understands, when the pandemic first started, and I don't want to dominate the conversation, when the pandemic first started, it was looking at spread in the community. And that number was what you see recommended, 10 out of 100,000, but they were measuring spread, if that makes sense to everybody. Okay, two years later, we still have spread, but we know that it's already in the community. So that model is very similar to what was being used in the pandemic, okay, initially. But Ryan, what was the numbers? And that was out of 100,000.
Fifty or more for 100,000.
For 100,000. And that was out of 100,000, because that was the model that was used. So I would love to have feedback or have a discussion or direction.
Well, what would be the percentage of a school needing to be COVID-positive before we would actually close a school?
Before each school set up again, set up in the, from PDE, that model was 5%. They had two ways you can get there. It was 5% of your total body, which included the body of teachers and students, 5%. Or what they had was, they had what they call a caseload, which was a number, I think it was 25. It was done in groups. So if you were less than 500 people in the building, it was 25. If you were graded, you were 500 to 900, it was a spread of 25 to 45. Over 900, they gave you a different number. So there were two ways, but those numbers came very close, no matter how you did it. Like, if you were doing the 5% or their, their, their way of doing that, they came very close, like within numbers of each other, 19 versus 21 or something like that. And that is done in a two-week rolling period, if you're still following that model, okay? That's when we were tracking, we were trying to track spread. If you, it was in a two-week rolling model, so if you had five cases in week one, and you had three cases in week two, that rolling model was you had eight cases in a 14-day period, counting the weekends, so that's how you looked at that total number.
Well, if I could speak to my opinion, I personally, did you say something?
No, I said please, please.
I personally would like to think that we would want to be proactive instead of reactive in setting a policy to circumvent distinct cases. I don't see anything wrong with that. I believe that it is our, it is our responsibility as a district, while the students are in our care, that we provide every safety measure that we can to ensure a safe environment. No, we don't know what they do after they leave school. We don't know what they do before they come to school. But while they're in the building, I believe that's our responsibility to stop the spread as much as we possibly can. That's my opinion.
Melissa, I agree with you. I, I feel that we do have a responsibility to keep the students safe while they are in the school to the best that we can. Again, we don't have any control once they leave the building and they go home, but I feel that it is our responsibility to try to provide a safe environment for all of the students, not just some, but all of them. So I do agree with you.
I guess I'd step in. I also agree that we have to provide the safest environment as possible. The problem I have with that is, is that making them wear masks is counterproductive. There are some studies out there that show that masking increases your chances of getting it. For 100 years before this pandemic, it was known that cloth masks, surgical masks, did not stop the spread of influenza, and this disease transmits very much like that. The bottom line is that they do not work. The vast majority of the studies out there, I'm not quite as confident as Ron, is that there are none out there, peer-reviewed, that say that they work. But there are a lot, the overwhelming majority, that say that they do not. There's been some peer reviewing that took studies that I can read for myself and tell that they don't work, and then they come back and say that they do. It's been a long time since I had to read studies and write abstracts in college, but I knew how to do it, and my reading skills are still pretty decent. I have not seen any overwhelming evidence that they work, and I have seen some that they're actually counterproductive. And so making kids wear masks in school is not helping keep them safe.
I would verify we disagree completely with that. There's a Lee et al. meta-analysis that came out in 2021. There were dozens of studies that show that masking works. We have a local epidemiologist, who is a professional, who has gone to, has a PhD in this and says that masking works. I don't know these studies that you're talking about. I would love to read them, so if you could send them to me. But I will send you the Lee et al. meta-analysis that came out last year. This shouldn't have, I mean, I'm surprised that people actually think that masks don't work. I'm surprised. I would like to say that the type of mask does matter, and thanks for, Mr. Erwin, for pointing that out. And so I agree with buying N95s, because they do work better, and they protect at a different level. So thanks for bringing that up, Mr. Erwin.
Kevin, I see you would like to speak?
First of all, we've heard from both sides. We've heard from both sides for a long time. We went back, and I believe it was in August, we just went with our plan, which was masking due to the state. Once that got lifted, whether it was courts, whatever happened, we went to optional, leaving it up to the parents. And personally, that's where I feel we need to be, leaving it up to the parents. Because now we're looking at masking, putting a masking mandate back in place, handed this printed-up copy, which came from somebody, in place. So it wasn't like this was a last-minute determination that, what, noon today, I get a phone call that it's going to be possibly on the agenda or modified for the agenda tonight.
Kevin, could I just clarify? That was given to us last week.
By Mr. Conley.
This here was given. But, but what I'm saying is, though, then today, we, we get a phone call that we're putting it on the agenda, a last-minute agenda item, and it's going to take a motion to change. I think we've done it in service to the other side.
I want to clarify, just wait, wait, wait. I want to clarify what the motion states. The motion is not stating a vote. The motion is just stating a discussion.
Yeah, I know that, I know that. So, so what was happening is, is the other side, and I don't care whether it's Ron Erwin and his group or who it is, but I think we're at the point where we're putting a masking mandate back in place, and we have science on both sides, and it depends on where you're getting your science from. You can get it from the CDC.org, you can get it from the CDC.com. They're not the same, but they give you information. So I don't know where Mr. Conley's informations come from, and Mr. Erwin's got his, his information. But I'm just personally, right now, saying that we stay where we're at, leaving it up to the parent to decide whether their kid wears a mask to school. Because I know as well as everybody sitting in this room that we put a masking mandate in, I want to know how are we going to enforce it? We couldn't enforce the last mask mandate. How are we going to enforce a new one? Are we going to have a police officer standing at the door and handing out the mask? How are we going to police it on the buses, which some buses, the kids are wearing them, some they're not, some even the drivers aren't even wearing them? So I'm just trying to decipher where we go, and I know that, I've got an eight-year-old, she takes her mask to school. Is she wearing it in school? I don't know. She's given one. My high school student, 10th grader, I know she has it. Is she wearing it all day? I'm not policing it. She's been, they've both been vaccinated. But I'm not advocating that we force a vaccination, but from what I'm seeing here down the road, it looks like we might be going that avenue, which is another whole ballgame. So at this point, I'm not in favor of changing our health and welfare plan. I'm in favor of leaving it the way it is, leaving it up to the parent. Let the parent decide. And I know before, we kept telling those parents that did not want their kids to be masked, keep them home, homeschool. I don't want to say to the parent that wants their kid to be masked, "Well, we're not going to do a masking mandate, keep your kid at home either." But on the other hand, let the kid wear the mask. How many people go to Walmart, or Giant Eagle, or go to the movies, or go bowling? What do you see? We've had a senior, I believe, from MASH come and tell us that a sibling was put on quarantine, and guess where she was? Walmart, without a mask, shopping. So what did we do? But don't wear a mask to school, or you get quarantined, you go home, whatever, or I can go out, but I don't need to wear the mask anywhere but in school. And I know we're not within that six-foot distance apart, but on the other hand, you go to Walmart, they're hand-in-hand. You go to the movies, they're sitting side by side. So, I mean, that's just where I'm at, at this point.
All right, I'd like to, I would like to share a few comments. Number one, I'm glad that we brought this up on the agenda, and I'm glad that we were able to have the discussion. Because I think it's really important. I know what drives my decision-making is not emotionally based, it's from gathering information. And I've had ongoing, I gather that information from ongoing discussions with Mr. Washington, my review of information from the CDC, my review of information from PDE, voices of the local community on both sides, local health organizations, for almost now, we're going on two years, that we have had these discussions. And I just want you to know that reviewing and synthesizing this information has been ongoing. And I try and integrate it into the understanding of the culture and the needs of Crawford Central School District and the community at large. The decisions, I don't think anyone sitting on this board in the past or currently take this decision-making lightly. Whether they agree or were aligned with the differing views does not mean that we're not listening to your views. Listening to views does not mean alignment. So I want you to know that I believe everybody on this board listens respectfully to what you have to say and then makes their own decision. These are nine members on this board, 10 members on this board, nine are voting members of the board, and we take the information very seriously. With that said, I also want to encourage people, so one of the most current information that I received and looked at that has helped kind of confirm my decision at this point and how I feel at this point, it was a podcast on NPR that just came out on January 19 of 2022. So it's very current. It's specific to school environments, called Making Sense of the COVID Strategy in America's Schools. So they're not looking at community as much as they are looking to school environments across the nation. And it includes interviews with Dr. Rochelle Walensky, Director of CDC, Dr. Monica Gandhi, Professor of Medicine and Infectious Disease at the University of California, and also school administrators and teachers. It's, I think it's at least an hour-long podcast. It gives a great perspective of the beginning of the responses to the pandemic today, from the beginning to today, specific to school environments. And here are some major, I ask you to go and look at that. I will give you the website. It's www.npr.org/podcast, then do Making Sense of the COVID Strategy in America's Schools. Here are what my takeaways were from what was shared on that podcast. Students K-12 continue to be at very low risk for severe disease from COVID. Disease transmission in school is very low, even when there is high community transmission. There is very low student-to-adult transmission. Disrupting schools or closing schools does not decrease transmission. In-school learning provides the best educational opportunity for all our students. One-way masking is effective. If vaccinated and boosted, and one-way mask-wearing protects you regardless of what anyone else is doing. Dr. Shira Dawn Duron, epidemiologist from TASS, said we've reached the point where it's unsustainable to depend on others for protection. Vaccine provides the best protection against severe disease. The vaccine is available to any, as far as I know, in our community, the vaccine is available to anyone in the community who would like to have it. I think we, they stated, and I think I've heard it across other podcasts and information sources, that we are moving in a direction where we no longer are trying to manage transmission but severe disease, which is best managed through vaccination. So I do highly advocate for vaccines and masking, but I do not believe that mandating is necessary to keep our students safe in our schools at this point in time. I am open to new information as it comes out, but that is how I'm processing the information. So I don't know if anybody wants to share anything else at this point.
Excuse me, because this was not listed on the agenda, I did not ask to speak. However, because it was on the agenda, is there a way I could request to speak on the matter?
Yeah, you can take three minutes to speak.
Thank you very much.
Put it to me.
At the end. At the end.
At the end, yeah, sure. Anybody else want to make a comment?
No, I would, I guess I would say that if individual masking is where you're leaning, and if that's protective, then I would be in favor of providing N95 high-quality masks to students, so that they can try to protect themselves.
Ryan, one of the things that was recommended from epidemiologists was not to do the N95 with the youngsters, do the- Do the surgical mask. That might be a way of looking at it. I'm just saying that's what a piece of advice was drawn out there as well. But I'm just giving you advice as to what they, what was also passed on to me. Can we make them available if they would like?
I agree. I'm in favor of a mask. I'm vaccinated and boosted, and I have, all my family wears their masks. And we promote that within ourselves. And, you know, we, whenever we're out in the public or anything, my family wears masks. And my kids are older, though, and so just simply talking with them and handing them a mask, you know, they're 100% on board. I did have two students graduate Meadville High School during the pandemic, one in 2019, or 2020, and one in 2021. And both of them have both, my, my senior missed his entire prom, his entire lacrosse season and everything. And even though he missed all that, he didn't have a problem wearing a mask. And neither did my son that just graduated in 2021. And they both have stated to me that the masks did not hinder their education in any way, shape, or form. They just wish some of their other friends would wear the masks more often as they did. I feel that, again, like Jan said, I don't want to force anybody to wear a mask. But I think that if we could provide masks to those who would like to wear one, and as well as vaccine information, as a school board, I think that would be a good direction for us to go. And that, that's just my opinion.
Does anyone have any other comments to add to the discussion?
I don't have any problem with either of those ideas. As far as the vaccine education, I think it should be something in writing. I don't, I don't want to take away time from teaching. I think the mask mandate last fall took enough time, you know, of some teachers trying to enforce and that sort of thing. I think it was detrimental. But, so, you know, pamphlets, flyers, anything, you know, if you want to send information out with kids. But I don't think we need to, I don't think teachers need to take any time out of their day to do that. And as far as masks being made available, you know, I guess if it's in the budget, if we can find it somewhere, I don't have a problem with it.
I would just like to say that I'm, I'm wearing along those same lines as Kevin and Jan. I've, I've read pros and cons, and studies this way, studies that way. And I believe it should just be your own personal choice. I don't believe that we should take that choice away from families and students. If they want to wear it, if they feel it protects them, then they can wear it. If not, then they don't have to.
Well, may I say something about the masks? We have them available anyway. So why don't we just change the mask that we have available? So in other words, we have masks that we make available to students or anybody who wants to come in their building but want a mask. We have, we have them. So what we could do is, because we're already practicing that, we can simply switch out the type of mask that we're handing out to youngsters or people who come into our building. Does that make sense?
Well, I mean, like, so I consider this to be a surgical mask, what I'm wearing right now. It's not an N95, right? I think this should be available. And if somebody wants the protection of the N95, that should be available.
Well, those are very, already available.
Right. Those are already, well, I'm not saying change.
Right. Oh, so you're saying don't switch it out, have both.
I agree.
Give them the option. I heard something that would not be a change. It would be that if we were able to get information, that would be able to be sent home? Is that what I'm hearing, or is that not? I just heard it thrown out.
Information regarding the vaccine.
Regarding the vaccine.
I'd say have posters. Have the help, have the nurses, the health teachers. That could be part of their promotion for it. I don't know that we necessarily need to send something out. Or the ones that want it already know about it, and the ones that don't care are going to care.
Gives me some direction. So I'll at least take those steps. Remember, because we're not, we're not changing the health and safety plan, I still, because we're not voting on it, I still have to bring it back to you next month. And Kevin, you're absolutely right, because we have to give the right time for people on both sides to debate it. So I will bring it back to you next month. To have the ability to vote to make change, I will start working on these items unless the board wants to give me another direction to go in.
I'm just, discussion uncomfortable with that?
I would just like to remind the community how disruptive school closure is. And if that is the next step, if there's no middle ground in the next step and people are comfortable with that, I would just like to remind the community of how disruptive school closure is.
It is.
It is. I think we all agree with that.
And I just want to put in perspective. So we look at, like, MASH. And remember that 14-rolling-day window that I told you about where I look at numbers, right? And I, and I know, and I respect Mr. Conley's data because he does a great job. And he's crunching data out here, right? And I'm crunching data in here. Does that make sense to everybody? I'm crunching data here in the buildings. And of course, other people are crunching data out here. So my subpopulation is here. And so if I was to give you a 14-rolling-day window of MAMS, let's take MAMS, you know, from September, you're talking about four cases, four cases. That's, that's getting, that shutdown number I'm looking at, right?
Remind them of what that, yeah.
Remember the 5% and where I have to do in 14-rolling days? No, it makes sense to the psychologist, though. Right? Two, two, four, two, three, five, 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 four, nine, 10, right? Then we roll into December, five. And then for the week after we come back, 15. 30, 20, and now we're back to four. So the spread is kind of small, Ryan, in terms of that disruption inside of the small population I'm looking at. But I, I feel comfortable that we'll start on this, and you'll still have to have the plan back in front of you. So we'll start making these steps towards making these changes, and we'll continue with closure in the numbers.
Okay. If there's no more discussion, we'll move forward with the agenda. I'm going to turn it over to Melissa Burnett for curriculum.
This is the approval of the Meadville Area Senior High School Student Receiving Diploma. Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves for a Meadville Area Senior High School Student to receive his/her 2022 high school diploma upon meeting all requirements as established by the Meadville, by the Pennsylvania Department of Education as recommended by John C. Higgins, Principal. I so move.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Holly Chapman, extracurricular, please.
I attended the JOC meeting remotely via Zoom. Two main things that I.
Wait a second. I'm sorry. No, you are next to share the approval for the extracurricular.
Oh, all right. It is resolved. Approval of the Meadville Senior High School Orchestra Attending PMEA Region Orchestra. Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves for the Meadville Area Senior High School Orchestra attending the PMEA Region Orchestra in Dubois, Pennsylvania on January 24th through 25th, 2022 at a cost of $816 to the district. See Attachment 4. Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And you can continue with the next approval.
Thank you. Approval of the Meadville Area Senior High School's Softball Team to travel to Wilmington, North Carolina. Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves Meadville Area Senior High School Softball Team to travel to Wilmington, North Carolina on March 10th through the 13th, 2022, at no cost to the district. Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Approval of the formation of a baking club at Meadville Area Senior High School. Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District may hereby approve the formation of a baking club at Meadville Area Senior High School at no cost to the district. Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Questions or comments?
Will it be samples?
I don't know. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to Building and Grounds with Brian Miller, please.
The approval of the general construction and electrical construction bids for the door security at the Instructional Support Center. Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following bids for the door security at the Constructional Support Center. General construction, Fuller Home Building Incorporated, DBA Fuller Building Group at $83,350. And the electrical construction by RE Johnson Electric, Incorporated, for $26,209. The details can be seen in Attachment 7, and I so move.
Now, second, please, sir. Thank you, Melissa. Questions or comments?
I do. I'm not going to support the approval. And my reasoning is, and I know I missed a committee meeting, only two bids for the general construction, only one bid for the electrical construction. If anything, I think it, back out for rebid. I understand the reasoning for the, for the system. I mean, I'd walk through that door. Nobody knows you're here. I can go anywhere in the building I want. I just find that $111,000 is a lot of money to be spending with only two bids on a general contractor and a project of that size, and only one for the electrical. And I don't know what was discussed at the committee, but I just, I just can't support that. I just, I think we need at least three bids on a project of that size for both. And if we're just going to take one and not pursue, I've got to be fiscally responsible for that expenditure. I just don't think that in this situation that, and maybe there's reasoning out there as to why we only got two, but I'm not just pertinent to it, but I just can't support it at this point.
Anybody else?
Yeah, you could briefly just explain the rationale behind this before we were on the board.
Yeah, Ryan, those doors, right, they have no security. And they have no, they have not for years. And if you look at all our other buildings, we have created a security. They catch all with people who, video to, for, you know, secretaries or anyone with the bus people in. So what happens is, these doors have been unsecured for years. And we have talked about that for years of making those, the doors secure. I believe many, 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 many years ago, when I say many, there used to be a secretary that used to sit there. And that was taken away. And they never did anything about securing the door. So Kevin's right. You can kind of walk in here and go anywhere. And we've been working on that project for a couple of years.
So then the concern is sort of just like litigation or something happening?
Yeah.
Just keeping our building safe.
This has been the last building on, on the list for years. And I understand Kevin's concern, but I think we have put up a bid with the architects and all of them.
Anybody else? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Motion carries.
Mr. Smith and Mr. Maripod did no, correct?
Right.
Okay, we'll move on to Finances with Jeff Rose, please.
Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following financial activities. The Treasurers report for November and December, financial statements for November and December 21, and the payment of bills for December 21 and January 22, and I so move.
I need a second, please.
Second. I heard a lot. Brian.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And separately, the payment of bills for Girardi LP, and I so move.
Second.
Kevin?
I'm going to abstain of this to new to corporate ventures.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven ayes and one abstention.
Now, when I first got on the board, I would have read this whole thing to the whole folks. Tell me to remember. I'm not going to read all the wherethes and whatfores. And albeit resolved, we're going to, I do move that we vote to approve not to increase the school district taxes for the 2022, 2023 school year at a rate that exceeds the index.
And I need a second. Is that Holly?
Yes.
Okay, can you give questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Kevin, no?
Seven to one.
Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves Schedule L budget transfers, and I so move.
Second.
Second, Kevin, thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the second and final reading of Policy Number 236.1, threat assessment, and the attachment is available for your to peruse. And I need a motion.
So moved.
Don't wait.
Second. Kevin.
Kevin? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the CCESPA sick leave bank with revised guidelines? And I need a motion.
So moved.
Kevin, and a second?
Second.
Jeff? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following personnel schedules, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I? And I need a motion.
So moved, second.
Jeff Rose first, Kevin second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So at this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. First and foremost, I want, I think each and every one of you might recognize that you have a certificate at your place. And this is School Board Month Appreciation. And I just, a small token from the School Board Association, just thank you for being a school board member. This is a tough time to be a member and being on a school board. I wanted to just share something with you. We have a young man by the name of Luca who has made an invention. And he is invited to be at the Invention Convention. And I'm saying that right. As a runner-up for something he created. And I just want, Luca's going to explain it to you because this is something he created. So Lisa, do you have that? Let's see if we can share that with the board.
I'm not going to play the sound.
Oh, no voice. Ann, could you just check the voice on that?
Sure.
See if it's turned down.
Sound like this. Can you hear that? Okay. Can you turn that up on the TV?
My idea is a wrench or tool grip for people that have trouble gripping tools. This grip goes on the handle of a tool and eliminates the pain of gripping a normal tool. Reasons it eliminates pain are it gives the user more comfort in surface area to grip while using this invention. Thanks for letting me share my invention idea with you.
So Luca is in the running for first place, and the invention is actually for people who have arthritis and the ability to grip a tool and turn. So I just wanted to share that with you because he's a fifth grader at Neeson.
He's a fifth grader at Neeson Hill, and that's pretty awesome.
We're pretty excited that, you know, he's already shown it to Channel Lock and the pretty neat stuff, you know, so I just wanted to share that with you, you know, that. And with that, I think I'm done, Madam President, and I think you had some people.
I think we have another person who would like to speak in the public.
Yep.
Thank you again for giving me the opportunity. My name is Monica, I'm from Cochranton, I have two students in the Cochranton schools. As far as the N-95 masks that have been brought up, I don't have the knowledge and training that my dad does, however, it is my understanding that with N-95, they need to be fit-tested, they need to be disposed of every four hours, and they also, who's training the students in how to take them off without doing, you know, cross-contamination, things along those lines, which is also something that we are concerned about right now with the cloth masks. Just the other day, I saw a video of Dr. Fauci took off his mask and started twiddling it in his hands, touching the area that was just on his mouth and nose. Obviously, our children are more than likely going to do this. I know, especially I have a daughter with ADHD. She definitely sits there, she does fiddle with it, even if I told her, she's still going to, because it is a distraction for her. It is possibly going to continue being a distraction if these are continued to be required. I've also stood up here and I've spoke to you about the emotional damage or trauma that can be caused by continued mask-wearing. We have also seen increased numbers in suicide rates, self-harming, depression, anxiety, all within our students, and this is nationwide. So, I mean, I think we really need to be looking into some of the effects of continuing the mask-wearing. It has been two years now. We, we've, you know, closed down for two weeks so we could stop the spread, we wore our masks, we stayed home, we, we've done all of their things, and now it's been two years. I think we need to start looking at more of a normal, more back-to-normal, how can we do that in a safe manner? And a one-mask fits all kind of policy, doesn't seem like that's going to make a difference, it's not going to be what you are looking for, and especially with the N-95s. We're not going to be able to successfully put those on the way that they are supposed to. I mean, that's going to put more on the teachers, as was mentioned. The teachers have enough on their plates without having to police if the students are putting on the mask right, especially if it's a N-95, which is a little bit more complex. I, I mean, we, we've gone over this, and it was put on the agenda last minute, so again, thank you for letting me the, the time to speak, however, no one else knew that this was going to be on the agenda, or else we would have had more people here to talk to you about our side and how we feel, which, yes, you guys have heard from us quite a bit, I know that. But it, it obviously continues to be a, a debate here, but I really think that parents are doing what they feel is best. If a parent wants their child to wear a mask, by all means, I have no problem with that. Do what you feel is right for you and your family. However, I don't feel a mask is right for my children, and I've already explained to you with ADHD with my daughter, however, there's another reason also with my son, you know? What about the other children that have autism? They rely on seeing everyone's facial expressions so they can identify and learn emotions. Without that ability, we are actually doing more harm to them. So please, just do your research, look at both sides. Don't just look at the side that you agree with. I, I would really, really like to have you look into some of the resources we have provided to you. I mean, this isn't, it's not going to go away, obviously, so we need to maybe come to a compromise, but I do appreciate that you didn't vote on this today, you're going to discuss it, give us a chance next month to bring to you a few more resources, but I guess that's all I have to say, just please do look at the other side and the research that has been done on maybe the side you don't agree with. Maybe you'll find something that you do agree with. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. Is there anybody else from the public who has not spoken tonight that would like to come forward? If you've already spoken.
Some questions that were raised.
Pardon me?
Could I have one minute to address some questions that were raised during the discussion?
I don't know, did anybody have any questions on the board? Okay. I didn't understand that we had any questions, but.
Well, there was questions about the data and the source of the plan.
I don't think there was a question regarding that, that I'm aware of. Does anybody have any questions that need clarified? Then if you've already spoken, I'm going to say no.
Okay.
Anybody else who has not spoken? Okay, go forward and state your name. Wait, we had the lady in the back first, please.
Hi, I'm the lady in the back.
You please state your name.
Yep, my name is Maria Rosado-Husband. I have several children in the district. I came to support a lot of people tonight, the board, our teachers, our students, our parents, and our families. This debate has been going on a very, very long time, and I know people's intentions are good on both sides of this. The thing that I'm here to say and, and ask is that we use common sense. Why can't there be a plan in place that when community transmission levels are at a certain number, that we require masking until they fall below a certain time? That's not mandating all the time. It is a compromise, just like you just stated. You know, these kids are in school, some have issues, she brought up ADHD and autism. I have children with autism, and I also have a child that is ADHD as well. They have zero issues wearing their masks, they understand the importance of it. I recently came down with COVID after years, couple of years now, of avoiding it, and you know what? It was my own fault, I laxed on my mask. I'd go into the grocery store and grab something, but you know what? When I got sick, every single person in my household masked. I isolated, I stayed home, my children happily wore masks, and guess what? None of them became infected from me. So all I'm asking is just common sense. If I were standing here right now with no mask on and coughing, as I've heard others, you're, I, I would be just viewing it all over, you guys, all over these microphones. A mask is some form of a barrier to stop active infection. Surgical doctors don't wear them for no reason, and I most certainly am not wearing it for no reason. And my kids, as hard as it may be, they continue to wear their masks in school because they want to set the example for their friends, for their peers. They don't want somebody dying, and I don't know if recently you guys saw, Erie County had their first teenage COVID death. The numbers are getting younger, people's parents are dying, there's a gentleman in the paper today, my age, born the same year as me, and he passed from COVID. Taking little, little steps to try to ensure the safety and well-being of everybody, just like your children are important, the medically compromised children are important, and children with autism are important. Yes, facial expressions are needed, but you know what? I think they'd go without some facial expressions in order to stay healthy and live, and for their grandparents and their family members to be there with them. I don't know how many community members I am working with right now that are losing their uncles, their brothers.
Wrap it up.
Okay, I'm wrapping it up. This is my first time ever here talking on this discussion, on this topic, and I am just here for a compromise. Our board is smart. Our administrators are smart. This is just common sense.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Kellyanne Conley, I live at Almond Street in Meadville, and, so the lady was talking about children with autism, I have an autistic son, and I can tell you that, um, he does just fine with a mask, and I'm autistic as well, and I do just fine as well. And I would prefer if we stayed alive, you know? I would, I do just fine with a little bit less expression if I didn't have to worry about being exposed to a potentially deadly thing that doesn't just kill you. You can lose heart function, lung function, you could have amputations. It's really a dreadful thing. It's not just you live or you die, it's not binary. Long COVID is a thing, and long COVID is a thing in children. I, I, it blows my mind that people just don't seem to care. It, it hurts me that people's lives just don't seem to matter because people are being political about it and just, well, I don't need to wear a mask because blah, just, it's bigger than you. It's, it's, it's more than just you. It's not just you.
Thank you. I will now move to any board comments.
I just have one, I have one. I'm going to respond to what I think was Kim Nicolin was referring to, the Peacers. There was an article online, I did read it, I don't think that is involving us as an individual school board, what they were referring to were the individual members of the Peacers Board. They were going to release information to them, but they have to sign basically what I'd call a gag order, they're not allowed to discuss what was going on as part of the investigation of the bad financial investments that they were doing, and that, it's just part of the ongoing investigation, and in order to release it to the board members, they have to sign a gag order, they won't get it.
So in other words, that was their.
Yes, it, it was for the Peacers Board. I'm not sure who actually sent the order out, but it was going to that board. We basically have really no say other than what we pay in, what our $89 million obligation is.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other, any other board comments?
Correlation does not equal causation.
Thank you. Anybody else? With no other comments, be it resolved, be it no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 6:54 PM, and I need a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Kevin, and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.
I do need to have a quick.